Good evening. I'd like to call the December 14th regular meeting of the Portsmouth City School Board to order. Would you please stand for a moment of silence? Amen. This evening, I'd like to welcome everyone to our Portsmouth City School Board meeting. It is always good to see our family, friends, and our community partners with us. We have a treat this evening with Mount Hermon preschoolers presenting and performing this evening. So, Dr. Bracy?
Thank you, Mrs. Williams, and good evening to everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Everyone should be excited. 'Tis the season. This is the last board meeting before our holiday break. Only a few more days left before it's time to go home for an eight-day vacation. I know everyone is excited. I know the teachers and students are, and even some of the adults.
Boo!
That's some of our A-students back there. This evening, I have the pleasure of introducing three outstanding young people that I had the pleasure to meet as I was walking in from Mount Hermon Preschool. And the first is Olivia Garrick, Derek Hales, and Cadence Smith. As they come forward with their principal, Mrs. Patricia Williams, I'll give you a little information on each student. Olivia will be leading us in the pledge of allegiance. She loves playing with her cat, playing Minecraft video games, going to the park, and sitting next to mommy at Sunday school. She's involved in her church and community as a praise dance team member at Heritage United Methodist Church. She is also a food pantry volunteer. Olivia wants to be a teacher when she grows up. Her parents are Ronnie and Lisa Garrick, and if her parents are present, will you please stand at this time? Next, Derek loves buffalo dip and hamburgers. He is a huge fan of toy cars and loves watching TV and playing video games. He is active in his community and plans to be a police officer. His mother is Ms. Arlene Hales, and if Ms. Hales and any other members of his family are present, will you please stand at this time? Thank you. Next, for Cadence Smith, when she's not playing with her favorite dolls, she enjoys spending time with her family, especially her sisters. She likes eating shrimp, and she plans to be a doctor. Her parents are Fuchsia and Deandre Smith, and her sisters are Kayla Jones and Kalani Smith. And if you all are present, will you please stand and be recognized?
Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Mr. Parent, School Board Chairman, Ms. Williams, Vice Chairwoman. Dr. Bracy, Superintendent Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. My name is Derek Hales.
My name is Cadence Smith. We are pre-K students at Mount Hermon Preschool Center. We love our new technology interactive boards and iPads. They make learning engaging. We have been to the pumpkin patch and to a holiday play. Last week, the Elizabeth Park Ranger worked with us on becoming board watchers. We have many community partners who support us, like Level Lodge Number 3 for the 3rd and 4th District, and of course, our parents. There are more learning species planned for us because Mount Hermon staff has passionate purpose for us. Those promise to Portsmouth.
Now, we will sing for you.
Before they move, Reverend Fleming does have a gift for them.
Thank you, Ms. Garrick, Mr. Hales, Ms. Smith. You are superheroes. You represent academic excellence and responsible citizenship. Thank you for being leaders in Portsmouth Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
We wish you a merry Christmas.
Mott is here. Mott is here. Red, green, black. Red, green, black. We light our candles every night. Seventy things we celebrate. Our holiday filled with so much light. Mott's up is here. Mott is here. Mott is here. Red, green, black. Red, green, black. We light our candles every night. Seventy things we celebrate. Our holiday filled with so much light. Mott's up is here. Mott is here. Mott is here. Red, green, black. Red, green, black. We light our candles every night. Seventy things we celebrate. Our holiday filled with so much light. Mott's up is here.
Don't move. We have something for them.
Good evening, Ms. Williams, Vice Chairperson. Good evening, School Board members. Dr. Bracy, good evening, everyone. Ladies and gentlemen, on behalf of Mount Hermon Preschool Center, we would like to have all our faculty and staff stand. All our awesome parents, please stand. All our awesome parents. We would like to wish each of you a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and a thank you for this opportunity to showcase Mount Hermon Preschool Center. Thank you.
And please give our accomplices, Mr. Swinton, a round of applause.
Hello, how you doing? Oh, some of your kids.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Nigga, stand up straight. Alright. Yup. Alright, got it. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Well, those are cute old kids up there, weren't they?
Okay, we'll now have the School Board mission statement by Reverend Joseph Fleming.
The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship.
Thank you, Reverend Fleming. Next, we'll have board members, please indicate your attendance by electronic roll call vote.
Eight members present, one member absent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on the agenda is consideration of the agenda for December 14th, 2017. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move for approval, second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? If not, indicate your preference by electronic vote.
Just cover that up. It's unanimous.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on the agenda is our student representative report from Mr. Ian Robinson.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Vice Chair Williams, Dr. Bracy, members of the board, anyone in attendance. So, in a few weeks, some of our seniors in Portsmouth Public Schools will be leaving their home schools and receiving the first taste of the college experience through our First College program. We, I believe, we have more than about 200 students participating this year, which is pretty great, if I do say so myself. Allows students to gain a bunch of college credits that can be transferred to a four-year institution if they wish, or they can go, I believe, automotive certifications and I think I know someone that's doing HVAC. Yeah, no, it's super great. So, I am one of the students that will be participating in the First College program come beginning of January. So, yeah. So, I'm going to be asking my fellow students how they feel about the program. I'm currently in the process of arranging meeting dates with all three of the high schools so that I can talk to the students, whether it's in classroom or just groups of random students they pick out, not only about the First College program and if they're considering it or doing it or have heard about it even, but just as an overall gaining their opinion on the schools and their education, how, what they feel can be done to better. So, yeah, if everything works out, I will have the results of that for the next meeting. If it doesn't work out, then I will not be meeting there, and I will probably cry. Yeah, this is a quick one. Thank you all for your time. Since this is the last meeting of the year, happy holidays, happy new year. What's up, everyone? Any questions, comments? Awesome. You got one? Alright, go ahead.
Ian, you know, you had a tough road to follow tonight after all them little preschoolers, but it is nice to see the beginning of education.
Yep.
And then the end and the next step, you know, because you're there, you're at that senior year. So, I just want to say good luck as you go into First College. I'll be interested to hear your experience as you make that transition, and I know you talked about talking to high schoolers. I'm just wondering if you're attempting to get some middle schoolers in there as well to make that connection from middle to high school. So, I'd be interested to hear that as well. But enjoy your time off. We'll try to make it a little longer next year, you know, but that's alright. So, thank you, Ian. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Holidays.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ian. Okay, the next item is 4.1. Consideration of a readmission case, number 2017-18/15. Discipline case number 2016-17-17. Recommended readmission through adult ed. What's the board's pleasure? Is there a second? Thank you. Any discussion? If not, indicate your vote electronically. Okay. Consideration of 4.2. Consideration of an expulsion. Discipline case number 2017-18-16. Alternative placement. Alternative placement through the end of the school year. Board members' pleasure? Is there a second?
Second.
Indicate your vote electronically. Okay, 4.3. Oh, I'm sorry.
Seven yes votes, one abstention, it passes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Did we get the first one?
It was unanimous.
It was unanimous. All right. Ms. Hines?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Vice Chair, just, I wanted to be clear, there's a few cases I will be abstaining on because I arrived late to the closed meeting, so I will be not voting on the cases that I did not hear. So, there's three or four of them, so if you see an abstention, it's because I was not here for the meeting. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
All right, thank you. 4.3. Consideration of an expulsion, discipline case number 2017-18/17.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, vote electronically.
Seven yes votes, one abstention, it passes.
Okay, 4.4. Consideration of an expulsion, discipline case number 2017-18/18. Any discussion? If not, please vote electronically. Oh, expulsion? Yeah, that was expulsion. Both of those were expulsion. Okay. 4.5. Consideration of an expulsion, discipline case number 2017-18/19. Alternative placement through the end of the school year.
Move for approval?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote electronically. Okay, 4.5.
I need to know. Six yes votes, two noes, it passes.
Okay, 4.6. Consideration of an expulsion, discipline case number 2017-18/20. Alternative placement through the end of the school year. Any discussion? Please indicate your vote electronically.
Ms. Williams? Or Chairman, I just had a question. With 4.6, that was with alternative placement with, there was a stipulation, was there not?
Through the end of the school year, but in the, before the meeting ended, Dr. Bracy said they had it for the screening. Is that the one for the screening? He said we didn't need to put that.
That's one, 4.6. We're voting on with screening.
Well, we didn't have to announce that here. He has that for his record.
All right.
Okay. 4.7. Consideration of an expulsion, discipline case number 2017-18/21. Alternative placement through the end of the school year.
Move for approval? 4.7?
I thought it was one left. 4.7? Is that the last one? Oh, you, you, did we, 4.7? We didn't remember doing that, did we? But anyway, you said we've all, we've covered all of them?
I think so, you were going pretty fast.
Can we review them?
You want to make sure? We don't remember, Dr. Bracy and I don't remember the last.
No, that was six.
It was six.
You're right.
Okay.
They would say six, but I knew it's seven. So, you can focus on it.
Okay, right. You made the motion and you seconded. Okay, any discussion?
We're voting on 4.7, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, no discussion, please vote electronically. Okay, thank you all. Okay, you want to announce?
My yes votes, no, it passes.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, the next item on our agenda is presentation of our CAFER Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, FY 2016-17. Ms. Krista Adolf.
Yes, Ms. Adolf is the audit partner for Cherry Burkett, and she's here tonight to do the presentation of the audit.
All right, good evening. Good evening, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, Dr. Bracy, and all others in attendance tonight. I am pleased to be here tonight to report to you the results of the June 30, 2017 Financial Statement Audit. So, we were engaged to audit not only the financial statements that you see in front of you, but in addition to the financial statements of the school board, we also audited the financial statements of the school activity funds. Those were issued several months ago and are included as a fiduciary fund or an agency fund within the CAFER that you see in front of you tonight. So, in conducting our audit, it's not just an audit of the financial statements, it's also an audit of your compliance with laws and regulations in accordance with government auditing standards, as well as compliance with certain laws, regulations as specified by the Auditor of Public Accounts of the Commonwealth of Virginia. In addition, there's also a separate single audit that is required, and that is an audit of your compliance with the federal grant monies that you receive. Now, one caveat to the single audit is that information is included in the city's CAFER. It is not separately included in the school board's financial statements. Now, as part of conducting our audit, we do test the material balances and transactions and disclosures that you see built into those financial statements. So, the primary purpose of our audit is to ensure that the financial statements are correctly stated and not materially misstated, and that they're presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So, in conducting our audit, we are required to gain an understanding of the internal control environment surrounding the processes that the school board has put in place over financial reporting, and as well as your compliance with grants. So, in gaining that understanding, we perform a series of interviews with personnel, we perform walkthrough transactions to verify that what they're telling us is in place, they're actually showing us and proving to us that those are in place, as well as we perform some tests of compliance of those internal controls. And so, when we perform that, it's really to test that the controls are appropriately designed, and not necessarily that the full control environment's operating effectively. So, that being said, we do issue a report on internal control, but it's the design. And so, we do not issue that separate assurance that they're in place and operating effectively as they should, even though we do test, sample test, certain internal controls. So, if you're familiar with the private sector, they have the SOCS 404 type auditing, and that does provide the assurance on internal controls. That does not apply to the governmental environment, so again, there is no overall assurance on internal controls. However, if during our walkthroughs, if during our testing, any matters come to our attention, that would be considered deficiencies in the internal control environment where a potential misstatement could occur with those financial statements, or if noncompliance could occur in testing those grants and other laws and regulations, we would be required to bring that to your attention. So, as a result of the audit, we essentially issue three audit opinions. And the first opinion is on the financial statements themselves. The second is on your compliance with laws and regulations over the government auditing standards and the specifications put out by the Auditor of Public Accounts. And then, the third report is that single audit report, and it's of our compliance with your federal grants. So, we do issue those three reports. Only the first two are included in your financial statements. Again, the single audit is included in the city's financial statements. So, if you could advance forward two more slides, please. So, at the conclusion, we do present to you the results of our audit. And so, I am pleased to report to you that we did have unmodified opinions on all three of those reports, the financial statements, government auditing standards, and single audit. That is a clean audit opinion, and ultimately, the result of what you'd want to come out of an audit. Now, I did mention to you that we do certain walkthroughs and testing of internal controls. So, if, again, any matters came to our attention, we would be required to report those to you, and those would be included in our compliance report, included in the back of those financial statements. So, based on our audit, there was one matter of internal control where we felt was considered to be a significant deficiency, and we did report that to you in detail in the back of our report. So, in addition, we do test compliance with laws, regulations, and grants. And if any matters of noncompliance come to our attention, we also are required to report those to you. Those are also detailed in that same compliance report, included in the back of the financial statements. And so, we did have the one finding related to laws and regulations and that surrounding not timely filing one of the conflict of interest statements. And then, the other two were related to Title I and certain compliance over that grant. And again, the detail of that is included in the city's financial statements. So, as part of our audit, we are required to tell you a few additional things. And so, during the year, there was one significant new accounting standard that the school board adopted, and that was GASB 74. And essentially, what this standard is, is a reporting for other post-employment benefit plans. And so, this is of the plan itself, not the employee piece. And essentially, what that does is require you to have additional disclosures related to your other post-employment benefit plans, included in your financial statements this current year, to ramp up for GASB Statement 75, which is effective next year, which I'll explain to you in a few moments. And so, that standard was effective this year, so if you compared this year to last year, you would see some additional information related to those post-employment benefit plans. So, in conducting our audit, as you review the financial statements and numbers, there are some estimates built into the financial statements. So, not every number is a hard number, not every number is like cash. You can't go to a bank statement, you can't go to that reconciliation and say, this is exactly what I have for the balance. So, some of them is based on management judgment, and certain other assumptions and estimates are created. So, we do try to bring those to your attention. The most significant ones of those would relate to any allowance for doubtful accounts on any collections of receivables that you might have. The second one would be on depreciation expense, because that's based on depreciating an asset over its estimated useful life. So, you buy school buses, you depreciate them, let's say, over 10 years. That school bus could last you eight years, it could last you 12. So, that 10 years really is just an estimate that management comes up with. And then, the last one is any of your actuarially computed liabilities. So, those are sent to a separate third-party expert actuary who does calculate essentially a long-term liability based on certain assumptions, based on certain information provided by the finance staff here. So, again, any changes in the underlying assumptions could result in that number that's reported in the current year ultimately changing. So, we just want to bring that to your attention, that not every number is a true hard and fast number. So, during the course of the audit, in order to make sure the financial statements are correctly misstated, there could be times where we propose audit adjustments. So, I am pleased to tell you, we did not propose any audit adjustments this year in order to make the financial statements correctly stated. So, we also did not have any disagreements with management or any significant difficulties that we encountered in performing the audit. If we did, we would be required to report those to you, and that would be something that you would probably want to know about. So, I am pleased to tell you, we did not have any of that. So, lastly, kind of in conclusion, we are independent with respect to the school board. That's similar to your conflicts of interest. That means we have no family relationships or financial interests or other relationships that would cause us to have any bias in issuing you an opinion that maybe you didn't warrant. So, at the conclusion of our audit, we do ask management to provide us a representation that says the financial statements are correctly stated, that they are in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, and that essentially, they provided us everything that we needed to conduct our audit. So, management did provide us that letter before issuance of these financial statements. So, in closing, I really want to tell you about two new standards that are coming effective in future years. The first one is GASB 75, and it is effective next year, and this relates to the other post-employment benefit plans, primarily your retirees' health insurance. And essentially, the standard is going to follow the same thing that happened with pension three years ago. So, you're going to take the liability that you have that's already disclosed in your financial statements, and you're going to bring that onto the face of your statements. So, it's moving a little bit more, government accounting standards are moving a little bit more into like what the private sector's doing. And so, again, you're bringing those liabilities onto the face of those financial statements. The second one is leases, and it'll be effective in 2020. This could be a significant new standard. If you follow what's happening in the private sector, also known as FASB accounting, they are moving to the same thing as well as international standards. So, currently, there's really two types of leases that are reported, operating leases, which are recorded as an expense during the year, and capital leases, which is ultimately picked up and recorded as a liability with an offsetting asset. And so, what this standard will do is make every lease like a capital lease. And so, for every lease, instead of recording an expense in the current year and just disclosing what the future maturities are, you're going to consider the full future maturities of that lease and record the liability on the face of the statements with essentially an offsetting asset. So, what the standard does is really provide a grossing up effect on your financial statements. It's going to gross up your assets, it's going to gross up your liabilities. And so, that's what the standard's going to do. So, in concluding my presentation, we really would be remiss to not thank the finance staff, so Ms. Dorch and Ms. Parks and their respective staffs, and the other departments that did assist us throughout the audit. So, the audit is a huge undertaking. We start fieldwork approximately in the April-May timeframe and conclude in December. So, it is a daunting effort, and we would be remiss to not actually appreciate their efforts. So, with that, I will take any questions you might have.
Any questions? I see no lights. Thank you so much, and we have been presented with a clean audit. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
I appreciate that.
Yes, Vice Chair, thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to Brittany and her staff and for the help and the assistance that was provided in order to get us this clean audit, not only during the audit process but during the year, which is what the audit kind of puts under the microscope. So, thank you for doing what you do, and thank you for keeping with current standards and doing what we ask you to do and what the audit is asking you to do too. So, I just wanted to say thank you again.
Okay, before we move on to our monthly curriculum and instruction report with Dr. Nguyen, I do recognize one of our revered former principals with us tonight. He's sitting there so quietly. So many people know him, Mr. Lyndale Wallace. We're so, we're so happy to have you here with us tonight. We know that you're also filling in over at Waters Middle, and we appreciate that. And just saying, good to see you. Okay, Ms., Dr. Nguyen?
Good evening, Vice Chairman Williams, Dr. Bracy, and members of the school board. It's always my pleasure to give the curriculum and instruction... It's always my pleasure to give the curriculum and instruction report, and this month, we are drawing your attention to the documents that are in your board docs. But we also have a special surprise for you from Waters Middle School, which is why Mr. Wallace is here, to be with the students who will be talking with us tonight about their experiences in the 21st Century After-School Program. First, we have, and I would ask that they come up as I call their names and give you their bios. Ms. Kendra Cherry is an eighth grader at Waters, and she's lived in Portsmouth with her dad for the past two and a half years. Her dad is Kenji Cherry. Mr. Cherry, would you please stand? And she's also here with her sister Kayla Cherry. Thank you. Her favorite subject is math, and she has attended the 21st Century After-School Program for the last two years, and her hobbies are running track and art. And she says she has, currently has, an A in art, and she is patiently awaiting track and field season. We also have Deshaun Hill, and Deshaun is also a 13-year-old eighth grader at Waters. He's lived in Portsmouth all of his life, and he listed all of the schools that he's attended here. He is here with his mother, Chelsea Jones, and his little brother Ashton. His favorite subject is algebra. He says he wants to be an overachiever because when things seem tough, it makes him work harder. He wants to attend college and learn more about fine arts with a focus on music and the entertainment industry. He, too, has attended 21st Century for the past two years, and he says that education is very important in his family, and his mother has instilled in him the value of a degree and the impact it will have on his future. I give you Kendra and Deshaun.
Hello, my name is Kendra Cherry, and I would like to start by saying that it's an honor to be here. I am a participant in the Waters 21st Century Program. I love the program because it gives me an opportunity to learn new things in a fun way. Another reason I like 21st Century is because it teaches you other stuff that you may not cover in class. It's not an extended school day. We get to do co-activities and fun stuff. The teachers are there to help you and work on the items that you may struggle with. We need to get, we get to go to neat trips like the Spirit of Norfolk Cruise, our activities and our music classes. The teacher always there, is always, the teacher are always there when you need them, and you get to spend extra time with your friends at school. This is why I joined 21st Century, and I am looking forward to the summer program.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Deshaun Hill, as she said, and I love the 21st Century Program a lot. The program is an enrichment program. It's kind of like adding to what you learn in school. It's like a little extra help. And I like the program because it could help me in the future, and it's like, it's like, you know, like I said, and adding to what you can learn in school, and it could benefit you a lot. The teachers help out a lot because, you know, if you need anything, they're always right there to help you. Always depend on them, in my opinion, because it's kind of all you got besides your family. So I appreciate them a lot. We had a summer camp recently, and I liked it because it had like fun activities that we could use at home, not just there and at school and stuff. So I appreciate the teachers for, you know, sharing everything that they did in the summer camp. We also went to George Washington's house in Richmond, Jamestown, and I, I thought it was very interesting because I never knew that we could do that, like go to his house and stuff like that and see everything that we did. So I like to thank Ms. Allen Brown and Ms. Garrett for, you know, arranging that for We went on the Spirit of Norfolk Cruise, and it was a fun experience because I've never been up there before, and I haven't seen everything that I saw. So I really liked going up there. Food was good. I saw a lot of people that I'd never seen before, and I met a lot of cool people. And yeah, that's all I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you. You also have some gifts from Kendra and Deshaun that are t-shirts and, I believe, one of the cups from the 21st Century Program. I also want to recognize Ms. Lillian Allen Brown because she has been phenomenal working with these students. And even though she now works for the Office of Social Studies, she's very committed still to the 21st Century Program. It has been an outstanding experience for our students. We've gotten tremendous feedback, and we're very proud of the increases in student achievement that we're seeing that are directly linked to this program. So thank you, Kendra and Deshaun.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for the gifts, the t-shirts and the mugs. Very good. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Resolution, Virginia Principals Appreciation Week, January 21st through the 27th, 2018.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, Dr. Bracy, school board members. Tonight, I'm very pleased to present to you a resolution from the Honorable Terry McAuliffe. By virtue of the authority vested by the Constitution of Virginia and the Governor of the Commonwealth of Virginia, there is hereby officially recognized 2018 Virginia School Principals Appreciation Week. Whereas school principals work cooperatively to direct, develop, and inspire all members of the school staff and student body and to communicate effectively with parents to engage them in the learning process. And whereas participants serve as educational leaders responsible for managing the policies, regulations, and procedures necessary to ensure safe and effective learning environments for all students in Virginia's public and private schools. And whereas principals and teachers are entrusted with the opportunity and responsibility of guiding, directing, nurturing, mentoring, and imparting knowledge to our children while they're at school. And whereas principals must work collaboratively with teachers, staff, students, parents, and the community at large to proactively prepare students to be self-reliant and productive citizens. And whereas Virginia School Principals Appreciation Week is an opportunity to recognize the hard work of Virginia school principals and to recognize the importance of principals in ensuring that every child has access to a quality education. Now therefore, I, Terrence R. McAuliffe, do hereby recognize January 21st through 27th, 2018, as Virginia School Principals Appreciation Week in our Commonwealth of Virginia, and I call this observance to the attention of all our citizens. I present this tonight and propose it for adoption this 14th day of December, 2017.
Thank you, Dr. Cromody. Board members, your pleasure.
Move for approval.
Second. Any discussion? Please vote electronically.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, we'd like to thank all of our principals. They are our gatekeepers, and they make sure our schools run as best as they possibly can, and we certainly do appreciate them for their hard work. Okay, the next item on the agenda, 8.1, is consideration of the minutes of November 9th, 2017. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move for approval.
Any discussion? Please vote electronically. Okay, public comment.
It's unanimous.
I'm sorry, I always forget.
It's okay.
Discussion, public comment. Madam Clerk, non-agenda items. Do we have any speakers?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. Principles of Liberty 26 reads, "The core unit which determines the strength of any society is the family. Therefore, the government should foster and protect its integrity. The founding fathers felt that the legal, moral, and social relationships between husband and wife were clearly established by natural laws. The husband and wife are the second level of government. Each had their specific rights and duties. The role of the man is to protect and provide. The woman's duty is to strengthen the family purpose in the home and provide a wholesome environment for her husband and children. Their duties are not to promote or participate in the vices that are occurring in our society today, such as lust, gluttony, greed, laziness, violent anger, envy, and pride. These vices are so prevalent in our society today and are destroying our children's personal and community life. With these vices, we, the people, are seeing unreasonableness, ignorance, and injustices everywhere. We are also seeing how the government is not protecting the family's integrity by taking more and more functions over from the church. On November the 27th, there was a joint meeting with the City Council and the Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority. The highlights given: Dale Homes Rental Assistance Demonstration Program has completed 64% of its units, and the rest of the 146 units will be completed by March 2019. There are 207 single women and 164 children living in this public housing community. Since the churches are the third level of government, it is their duty to secure a virtuous and stable people. What are, what are the members of the six churches in Voting Precinct 13 doing to assist these women and children who have been abandoned by their fathers? How come we are relying on the federal government to take care of our responsibility to self-govern? The next highlight was about the work completed in Swanson Homes from Hurricane Matthew for over $3 million. Insurance has been filed, but no reimbursement has come in yet. Swanson Homes has 188 single women and 218 children living in this public housing community. What are the members of the 13 churches in Voting Precinct 9 doing to assist these women and children who have been abandoned by their fathers? How come we are relying on the federal government to take care of our responsibilities to self-govern? How come the churches aren't teaching men that it's their duty to get married and have children under their protection? It's not the government's responsibility to pay for people who are having unprotected sex and bringing forth unwanted children who the taxpaying citizens will have to pay for in our public school system. The school system complains all the time about the taxpaying citizens not wanting to pay for education in Portsmouth. If men and women would choose to abstain from producing children until marriage, maybe the taxpaying citizens wouldn't mind paying for the children's education. This is a call for the people to start getting married before having children, a call for parents to start taking their children to Sunday School and church, and a call to start teaching their children natural law. Honor your father and mother. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Si. Next speaker, public comment.
Good evening, Vice Chair Williams and members of the school board and the public. My name is Sergio O'Neill, and I am of the Cavill Manor Section of Portsmouth. Before I start, I would just like to say, by me now working in the school, I work in a, in a independent school in Virginia Beach, it is always lovely to see the pre-K kids come and perform. They do so much, and I always, every morning when I see my own pre-K kids, I, they are the highlight of my day. So I really appreciate you all allowing them to perform. A lot of people don't know what such an impact that those little people have. Moving on, on behalf of Portsmouth, Virginia organizing, we have sent several FOIA requests in regards to suspension data for the previous school year. As you all know, we were getting the reports monthly as requested, and in the last two months of last school year, we were not. And the reason was for various reasons, and some of them were some laws, some compliance things that had been cited. But however, referring to school board policy KBA-R, it specifically says that if the record contains information, they may legally be exempt from disclosure. It does, that does not mean the entire record has to be legally exempt from disclosure. And I think the response from where, from what Ms. Newsom had, when we asked for that data, was citing that all of that data was exempt from disclosure under that law, citing the fact that she said that this, that this data is not monitored or regularly monitored, whatever the case might be, whatever she said. So I, since Mr. Meekins is here, I think he should advise Ms. Newsom of what the law actually says and what the school board policy actually says so that we can remain in compliance with the law and the school board policy. I think that disclosure of the data, even with, even with the legal exemptions, is very vital to, to the information that the Portsmouth Public Schools, the parents seek. They want to know how, how their students are doing as far as what relates to discipline in their schools. I, I think it does a great injustice to these parents for them to have to, you know, not know what's going on until it hits social media in the schools. I think more parents would be involved if the reports came out and said, "This is what it is." I, I think that it's not one of those things where it's always produced in a negative light. It's one of those things that can actually encourage parents to participate. I know if I was a parent with a child in Portsmouth Public Schools, that I would want to know how my school is performing when it comes to discipline, since it is such a hot button topic, not only in Portsmouth Public Schools but in the state of Virginia and across the nation. We need to know these factors, these numbers, is to find out how, where our school stands. I mean, it's just that, it's that important because regardless of the fact of how it may look to some people, you know, it may look like it's a negative thing, there are other people who want to know what can they do to help change some of these discipline patterns. And it may not always be the parents. It may be very well the community partners. A lot of community partners, child advocates and all that have come before the school board and presented plenty of information that can help curb some of these high numbers. We know full well that Portsmouth is working hard, and I give you all kudos for what you have done, but there are still some more that can be done. I've heard it from several teachers, heard it from several parents, that there are some, still some concerns when it comes to the discipline practices in Portsmouth Public Schools. I can tell you right now that I'm not, I would be the first one to tell you that I'm not picking on only Portsmouth Public Schools, that I do the same thing for any other school district, that any other parent has posed to me as well, that has some type of discipline problem. Prime example, there was some concern in Virginia Beach, well, what's going on in their school system as well? And I had the same question that I'm posing here tonight. So I would definitely want you all to look at the school board policy and to make sure that the school system stays in compliance with the policy and make sure that when we, when organizations ask for certain data that is public information, that we get it. Because apparently, there's this mission notion that we're trying to dog the school system or present the school system in a negative light. What we're trying to do is actually partner with the school system and say, "Here's the information, parents. This is what you need to see. This is where you need to find out. This is a one other avenue where you can find out how you become involved in your child's schools." Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. Okay, Ms. Atkinson?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Mr. Meekins, can you look into that? Are we in compliance, or can you give us some, some legal guidance?
Excuse me. We, we as a board can ask Mr. Meekins about that, you know, if we decide that we need him to look into that.
Okay.
Yeah, that's something that comes from the superintendent or the entire, I mean, at the vote of the board. We don't normally just ask him in the middle of a meeting to, to look at, to look at discussion.
Okay, so it's, it's back to Dr. Bracy. Dr. Bracy, can we look into the legality of that, and can you provide the board some feedback?
Yes.
And also with the reporting on the suspensions, from my understanding, the, the last two months, it was because we were in SOL, which is understanding. But how are we issuing out, how are we keeping track of the data right now?
Ms. Atkinson, the, we, the data is still being kept as it normally would. If there are suspensions that take place at the school, in school or out of school, it's being tracked. What, I guess what you're referring to is information that may have been shared last year, monthly. That was something that I had requested to be done, to monitor the discipline that was in the schools based on some- in the schools based on something that I had heard. So that's why I was monitoring it then. Having conversation with curriculum and instruction, with Mr. Nottingham, you know, that I knew that was a daunting task because of the work that it takes to pull that. And then as we got close to SOLs at the end of the school year, I asked him to suspend doing it. I didn't need it. So what I was doing this year, getting it on a monthly basis is not really going to give me a baseline to really disaggregate it, to study it. So what I've done and what I've shared with those that have asked is that at the end of the semester, I will pull the data, and then I will look at it at a halfway point throughout the year. And then we'll sit down and look at trends and share out with schools that, or administrators, based on what we see. If we see any anomalies, we'll address that with them at that time. But it will be monitored. If there's a concern by any parent, they can talk to their administration about what's taking place at their school. But it is something that we're going to be taking a look at, but not on a monthly basis, but halfway throughout the year. At the end of the semester, I will ask him to pull the data. I've already shared that with him.
Okay. So just to follow up, so just to be clear, any parent of that particular school can go to the principal and ask for the suspension data?
Of their child.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions? Did that answer? Okay. All right, the next item on the agenda is monthly report, human resources and operations. Mr. Scott Ziegler.
Good evening, Vice Chair Williams, members of the board. You have before you the monthly operations and human resources report for consideration. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
If not, I ask the chair to entertain a motion to accept the employee transaction report and the employee transaction report addendum as presented.
Is there a motion?
I wanted to ask a question about...
Ms. Hines.
Thank you, Chairman. Vice Chair, I wanted to ask a question about the monthly report. Within that report, and my math is not, at the end of the day, my math is not all that well. I'm looking at the current vacancies that were on that report for the certified and the classified staff that are there throughout the division. If my math serves me correct, we've got 53 certified positions that are open. Can you explain what the difference is between a certified and a classified position, because there is a huge discrepancy in those numbers?
The certified positions are teacher positions, licensed teacher positions. And before I move on to classified, I do want you to know that our job fair yesterday was a success. I've heard feedback from several principals today that have said they have found newly minted certified teachers. One of our principals had two interviews today and has three tomorrow.
Nice.
Another one of our principals has interviews scheduled for Tuesday, and those are only the ones that I heard back from today because they're super excited to get those certified teachers interviewed. And if they're of quality, we're going to get them under contract and get them into our buildings very early in January. So certified in this chart refers to licensed teachers. Classified refers to administrative assistant, I'm sorry, not administrative, well, could refer to administrative assistants, instructional assistants, custodians, and folks that are paid by the hour.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to be clear on what I was looking at and what I was digesting, so...
Sure.
Thank you.
And Madam Vice Chair, if I could just back up one second, because I did highlight something from my report that I would like to point out to the board. We completed our United Way fundraiser from faculty and staff last month, and I wanted to congratulate the PPS family for raising close to $40,000 for the United Way of Southampton Roads. Not quite as high as last year, but the United Way has reported us to that. That's a trend across the board because so many people have given to the hurricane relief efforts and the fire relief efforts before this campaign started. So we are very excited about that and happy to report almost $40,000 in funds raised.
Very good. Excellent. Any other questions?
Madam Vice Chair, thank you. I just want to make sure that we're clear on our agenda. We went from 9.1 to 10.1. Did we need to announce any 9.2?
9.1, 9.2.
Board agenda items?
Well...
Did we need to announce it? I just want to make sure we're right on the agenda.
Oh, no, we're good. The board, the second speaker was Sergio, 9.2.
But that was...
That's just for the public.
He was non-agenda?
Yeah, that's just for, you want me to say it? We didn't have any board agenda items, Dr. Bracy.
Okay.
No other speakers.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we announced everything on the agenda, so we were good. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
And Vice Chair, I just want to be clear on the legal advice during the meetings. What is our board policy in reference to that? Do we not get legal guidance during meetings, or?
Well, normally, if you have a question for any of the administrators or the attorney, that goes through Dr. Bracy. And then he, I mean, in the past, that's how we've done it. We just didn't ask the city attorney, I mean, the school board attorney then, but I don't That's how we used to do it, because sometimes Dr. Bracy could answer the question before, like he did before he went to Mr. Meekins.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Okay, all right.
Madam Vice Chair?
Yes.
I got it. Just real quick. Well, just for sure, as far as operations and so forth, I have seen your report, and we did have a job fair, and by your numbers, possibly five?
That's the ones that I know about. I'm still getting reports back from principals.
Right. And it looks like as far as even the social media aspect, decent attraction and whatnot. My question, too, is what else are we doing to try to attract teachers, especially in high areas such as math and science? Are we, short, are we going on the road?
Absolutely.
Where are we going?
This is not the season for the road. But if you look back to my report last month, we did attend several job fairs last month in the local area, and also, I think, one or two out of the area. After the winter break, recruiting season at the universities and the state levels picks up. So we have folks going up and down the mid-Atlantic seaboard. We go as far west as Ohio and Illinois this year are planned, and I'm just going from the top of my head because I didn't bring that information. Penn State, North Carolina, all over Virginia, Ohio, Illinois. We had somebody go out to the, just past the Midwest to the desert states. That was in conjunction with some training for them and a job fair with that. So yes, we do go all over quite frequently.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Dikler. So as far as teachers, do we have, like, any partnerships with local colleges as far as, like, a program when they get out of school that they're hired in Portsmouth Public Schools?
We don't have a, if I'm reading, if I'm hearing your question correctly, we don't have a guarantee if you graduate from X school, you'll be hired here. However, we do have partnerships with all of the area schools, and we do place student teachers from most of the area schools, the ones with a strong, with a strong education department. And I'll give you an example. I talked with Wayne Williams, who's the principal of Victory, last night at the job fair, and he has, I think, three or four, or as many as five student teachers that are just finishing up this term, and they are December grads. And he was able to secure a second-grade, fully-certified teacher out of that crop of student teachers who have gone through his program and student taught at his schools. We do have student teachers, not at every school, but at many. The springtime is really student teacher season, so we do reach out to all of the coordinators of all the area schools and try to get placements here. We also have a cohort with ODU right now for administrators, people who are working on their ed specialist degree through ODU, and those are all internal people, so we'll be looking at them for career development and expansion as they move through that program and complete their program.
And to follow up on that question, what is our requirement for security as far as the qualifications?
If you, I can give tentatively, but I don't have all the job descriptions memorized. I think it's a high school diploma. High school diploma, and they have to pass state certification.
Okay.
Which we pay for and put them through that class. But there is a state certification required for school security officers.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any more questions from board members? If not, what's the pleasure of the board? Do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Need a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
On the employee transaction?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any discussion? If not, vote electronically, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ziegler. Okay, the next item on the agenda.
Five yes votes. Five yes votes, three no.
Okay, 11.1, electronic vote, consideration of the financial budget report, October 2017.
Good evening, Vice Chair Williams, school board members. The October report has been provided, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Move for approval. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically. Okay, 11.2, consideration of the financial budget report, November 2017.
Second.
I'm sorry, hold on.
Sorry.
The first one was unanimous. I'm sorry.
You gotta be quicker.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, the second one, it was a motion and a second. Any discussion?
No, Cardell. And then I was the second. I'm sorry, board member Patilla.
Okay, we're at 11.2 now.
Yes, ma'am.
The second one. Board member Patilla, and I believe seconded by Sarah. Any discussion? If not, electronic vote, please.
It's unanimous.
Thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome.
Thank you for bearing with me this evening. Okay, next on the agenda, 12.1, monthly report, Superintendent Dr. Elaboracy III.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. And a couple of things I'd just like to highlight is that we had our first college orientation back on December 4th at Todd Water Community College, and we had approximately 220 students that were in attendance that will be taking classes this year at TCC. So it's one of our larger groups, and we hope to sustain that number throughout the semester so those students get an orientation into what to expect. But when they go back, they'll get a more heart-to-heart with the professors, administration, without the parents, so that they can know their true expectations. Also, would like to share that I did have an opportunity to do the holiday greeting this year, got with the help of the students from Churchland Elementary. If you all, some of you may have seen the video, they did an outstanding job in making me look good on camera. As I shared with them, I said, "With you all sitting around me, nobody will notice anything that I'm saying." But they were very excited, and we always have a great time as we move that around throughout the schools each year. So just want to wish everyone happy holidays, enjoyable winter break. We'll be out until January 7th.
Seven?
I'm sorry, second, second, second.
Y'all got another five days!
Dr. Bracy's giving us an extra six days?
Now, I only say that if it's going to be, if I can get a motion and a second.
Motion.
No, for the record, the second. So by all means, do come back. We'll edit that out of the broadcast. But at your station, you'll see your gift that you'll have from me. So happy holidays as well with that, and look forward to seeing you in 2018.
All right, thank you, Dr. Bracy. Board member Hines.
Thank you. You want to go first?
I just want to wish all the staff, administration, a happy holiday. Happy holidays to all the board members, chairman, parents not here, vice chair. Thank you, guys, for supporting us, and thank you for continuing to move Portsmouth forward. And thank you, Dr. Bracy, for the chocolate-covered peanuts. Oh, and 21st Century as well. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you. I was moving on to board member comments and concerns, if that's okay? Not necessarily Dr. Bracy's speech, Vice Chair, is that all right?
Sure.
Okay. I'm staying on agenda. I'm making sure we're good. Dr. Bracy, first, let me say thank you for the chocolate, because I will say I took home the chocolate-covered peanuts last week, and my husband said, "Oh, Bracy finally got y'all some chocolate-covered peanuts." And I said, "No, that was Meekins." So thank you for the chocolate. We appreciate it, you know? So just, you know, Mr. Meekins has set the standard now, so.
Oh, great.
Yeah, oh, great. Thank you. But when it comes to a concern I've had, because you of all people know that one of the big issues, when you and I talk privately and up here, it is about public safety. And with the incident at a local high school where there was a child that harmed himself, I guess I'll just go ahead and say it, because it is the elephant in the room for a lot of people. He committed suicide on school grounds. And while the suicide is bad, and I don't want to detract from that, but talking with students and talking with parents, their big concern was how did the child get the gun in the school? And so that's where I'm going to come back to for the security aspect, because you and I have had several conversations, whether up here, whether in private, and through other conversations. I just want to make sure that we're offering secure schools where we're using our security pieces that we have in place, because nothing is 100%, nothing is foolproof. However, we know that an ounce of prevention is worth of, you know, is worth it in the end. So I'm just going to reiterate and ask you to make sure that our schools are as safe as they can be, that all of our security measures are being used, because in my day job, I teach high school students as well, and in my part-time job sitting up here, I am in contact with a lot of parents and a lot of students. And so that is the big question. That is the other piece in the room as well. So I just wanted to bring that, and as we go into 2018, we're all about new vision and new purpose and, you know, a new, better version of ourselves, and I just want to make sure that we're offering that safe and secure environment for our students and for our parents. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Lian.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the evening. First off, I just want to say to all those that can hear and everyone here, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I did not realize that these were chocolate peanuts, Dr. Bracy. So the last ones that got taken home, counsel, Mr. Meekins, got, yeah, I know, got stolen by the rest of the family, so these are going to get hidden, is how that's going to work. One thing that I do want to bring up, and I think that we, all of us, needs to have a discussion and look at in the new year, is with regards to how to come up with a more efficient or speedier process with discipline hearings as they come, as they occur. I mean, we all know that they're going to occur. It's very unfortunate, but I think that the time has come that we have to now look at how we can speed the process up so that these cases will have a closure and we move forward with it. So I'm asking Madam Chairman that sometime here in the near future, that we put this on possibly as an agenda item, or some, the committee look at a way to do this. I mean, if that means that we have to go over to something that I know that we've had discussions about but not crazy about, if it's going like a discipline... on possibly as an agenda item or some, the committee look at a way to do this. I mean, if that means that we have to go over to something that I know that we've had discussions about but not crazy about, if it's, if it's going like a discipline committee or if it means meeting an additional night, which I know probably not so crazy about. But at the same time though, I just think we have to come up with a better, more efficient way to get these cases moving forward. So I would just ask that in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb. Dr. Bracy?
Thank you, Vice Chair Williams. Mr. Parent did want me to share tonight with the January 25th meeting. We, we will be at that time ready for the presentation of the facility study. So we want to utilize the early session from 5:30 to 7 o'clock to present that. And in our meeting that we had with the city manager and mayor, we thought that it would be a good idea if the, the city council could come at that time to hear the report. Because as we report out, any CIP requests will need to be heard by them as well. So since we're going to have it at that time, that would be a good opportunity to have them come to hear the results of the facility study as well. So wanted to check with you all on that before we dedicate it that period. Although we know we have a joint meeting scheduled in, at the end of February, they felt that if it was a, any recommendation within that report that required us and them to look at possible new construction or planning along those lines, that the sooner the better.
Board members in agreement?
Yes.
Was that for the 25th?
Okay.
Okay, that's right. And thank you, Mr. Lamb. We did discuss that, you know, briefly at our last meeting.
Correct.
About how we could speed up the process for that. So I will certainly share that with Mr. Parent who had a work conflict. They could not be here tonight. So we can get some discussion going on that. And I just want to, for the viewing public, want to certainly make them aware that the student that committed suicide was not Portsmouth Public Schools. It was a local school division, but it would not, it was not Portsmouth. Thank God. We're sorry that it happened, but it was not our school division. And on that note, unless we have other speakers or anyone else want to say anything for the good of the cause.
Move for adjournment.
I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. I'll see you in 2018. And entertain a motion for.
Move for adjournment?
Second.
All right.
All right.